I'm going to introduce you to an outstanding coach in boys volleyball, Bill Schultz. Bill has been coaching varsity boys volleyball team for 22 seasons. He has a Niiger Frontier League record of 206 wins and 50 losses. And since 2018, and it was interrupted a little bit with COVID, to the present, he has 46 consecutive NFL wins. So it's still going. It's a remarkable record. So congratulations, Coach. He's been named Coach of the Year seven times, and he has eight NFL championships. And we have one more championship that happened in 1997. It's the first time we ever had a boys volleyball championship. And that's when Bill was a Viking in 1997. So he was on the first championship team in the Niiger Frontier League. He had three Section 6 championships and won New York State Championship in 2019, and it is our only state championship. So congratulations to Bill. And before he comes up here, I just want you to know that he was just in November inducted to the Western New York Men's Volleyball Hall of Fame, and it just started a few years back. So a Hall of Famer in the class of 2021. Congratulations to Coach Bill Schultz. Okay, Bill, come on up. He has built the program, and obviously, we are at the top of the Niiger Frontier League, and we're close to a section title each and every year. We were supposed to have a down year this year, and he still goes undefeated.
Thank you. Thank you, John, very much for the recognition. This season, we had to do some rebuilding, but not a lot. We still had a main core group. We were 12-0 in the NFL this year. I don't think we dropped a set this year in our league. Three P M. as league champs. Made it to the section finals again for a third time in a row. This year, we were unfortunate to win that one. It was a tough match. Went five sets, ended up losing by three points. We had six players from all first-team NFL, or, well, between all first-team, second-team, and third-team. I have two of them here. Can I get you guys to stand up? Nick and Paul Wynn. Nick was first-team and also NFL Player of the Year. Paul Wynn there was first-team libero for us on all NFL. Others that couldn't make it were John Simpson was first-team, Eddie Kortjak was first-team, Jared Dopler was second-team, and third-team was Talon Newton. Eddie Kortjak was our first-team All-West New York selection for Grand Island this year. Thank you.
Coach, quick question. I know we're talking about our varsity team, but could you just say the award that Coach Quinn or JV Coach won this year as well?
And yes, Coach Quinn JV, he was Coach of the Year for the JV team this year, and they were undefeated, too. They also have been having a great program. They've been undefeated also the past couple of years.
Thanks for that. I missed it, but I know it's there. And you talk about three coaches, with Lee Nelson included, that has built this program to one of the best in Western New York each and every year. Next up, and I apologize for being a little too long if I am, but these coaches don't get enough recognition as far as I'm concerned. And people really don't know the dedication and the years they put in and the sports they coach and their unbelievable records. So this is why I'm just happy to take some time and let everyone know how successful they are and how determined they are. Next up is our girls tennis coach, Don Prey. Our girls tennis team had a record in the, shoot, let's skip ahead a little bit. Let's back up. Our girls tennis team was coached by Don Prey for four years. If you're thinking he's been around a little longer, yes, he has. He's coached boys tennis for 24 years, and he was probably the main hug and the reason we started our Varsity Boys Federation Hockey 11 years ago. So he's coached three sports for the past four years. Girls tennis, the last four years, he's had an NFL record of 43 and 6. He's had two NFL championships, and he's been, and his team has won the New York State Sportsmanship Award this year and the NFL Sportsmanship Award. Don also coaches boys tennis, which I mentioned, 24 years. His record in the Niiger Frontier League is 213 and 16 losses, and he's had two NFL Coach of the Years. He's had eight NFL championships, and he's had two NFL Sportsmanship Awards. So not only do his teams produce and win, they're good sports on the court. And boys hockey, in the last 11 years, he's had four division championships, one Section 6 championship that came in 2019, and he went all the way to the New York State Finals in 2019 to place Minneapolis on their own ice at their own home. So that was a tough one, but he got there. Don is, well, well-known in Western New York. The section has given him the Niiger Frontier League Male Coach of the Year, and he was recognized in the Section 6 banquet in August as the section Sportsmanship Award. And that was back in 2013. So basically, what he did is he represented our Niiger Frontier League as the male rep for the Section 6 Sportsmanship Award of all the high schools. In 2019, the West New York Dominic Hachet Coach of the Year Award went to Don also. So just a terrific career. I want to thank him. Going back five years, when we, you know, our other coach stepped down, and Don took it over for girls tennis. And right now, I know Don will get up here, and he will mention his All-Stars and the successful season he had, which was undefeated. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Roth, and thank you to Dr. Graham and the school board for the opportunity to recognize the girls tennis team. I have the easiest job this year because the girls are just awesome. They're just a great team, and we have so many talented individuals and talented girls on the team. Finishing 14-0 against the competition in the NFL, really the highlight is when we can beat Niiger Wheatfield twice. And that's something, again, to always battle and win the Niiger Frontier League title. I'd like to recognize tonight the girls that were voted to the 2021 NFL All-Star Team in the Niiger Frontier League. We'll start first with Lilly Kazlowski and Clara Lefave. They were our second doubles team. They were 14-0 on the year, and they were again voted second-team NFL. They had an undefeated season, playing first time together on the tennis team. I don't know if Lilly and Clara are here, but they had an awesome season. Next up is our first doubles team, so Mia Schiffmacher and Alicia Hunt. I see Mia here. I'm not sure if Alicia is. Mia, if you can stand. 12-1 as a doubles team. First-team NFL recognition. They qualified for the Section 6 tournament and did an outstanding job there. And again, just a solid count-on point throughout the year. So congratulations, Mia and Alicia. Second-team first singles, Riley Webber. Riley was 14-0 at second singles. NFL second-team recognition. She did a play-in match to qualify for the Section 6 tournament and did an outstanding job there. So Riley, congratulations on your Section 6 recognition. And then first-team singles, Kirsten Brown. Kirsten was 14-0 at first singles. NFL first-team in the Section 6 tournament. She finished second. This was her fourth time to the Section 6 tournament, winning it once a couple of years ago. And this was her fourth time qualifying for the New York State Tennis Tournament held in the Albany's Connected Area over the past four years. And Kirsten, are we still undecided? No.
Committed to Mercy, Mercy University.
Committed to Mercy, Mercy University. So congratulations. And so once again, Dr. Graham and the school board, thank you for the opportunity to recognize the girls in the tennis team. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt, and congratulations, Kirsten. I go glad she's probably arguably the best player we've ever had at Grand Island. She's a big serve, great from the baseline, and it was enjoyable watching her play this year. And of course, Riley, the same thing at second singles. I don't think I ever remember a second singles girl playing as well as you. So congratulations. Last but not least, of course, is our football team, Coach Dean Santorio. Just think about some of the things he's accomplished over the years, and it's remarkable. First off, he's had 21 varsity seasons in football. His league, or you say, division record in football is 123 wins, 68 losses, and that is about 65% winning percentage. He's made the playoffs 16 of 21 years. He's had six league championships, two Section 6 championships. He's rated, ranked number 25 on the all-time Western New York career wins with 123, as I mentioned. And moving up the ladder, now, some of the things that he brings that a lot of the other coaches don't get the chance to get, but Dean doesn't, year in and year out, and another guy that never has a down year. His program is second-to-known in Western New York. He's in the top 10 every year. He's been the seven-time Buffalo Bills Coach of the Week, which comes with a, I'm not sure, Dean, $1,000? $1,000. So that's $7,000 he's made. Ruby, he just puts it in his pocket and goes shopping. Christmas, yeah. He's been the seventh-time Coach of the Year in Division, in Class A in the divisions. He's been a three-time annual recipient of the National Football League All-Pro, which donates, or donates a grant to the school district of their choice. And because of Brett Kern, 2003 punter and Grand Island alum, he has spent All-Pro three years in a row, and it was $10,000 a year, and it's $30,000 that Dean gets to spend for his football program. So this is the type of things that he has generated over the years, and it's just been remarkable. I'm going to mention baseball because sometimes we never get a chance to talk about the spring because it's kind of exams going on, sectionals going on. But his baseball career, 21 years of varsity seasons, really 22, but the COVID year was canceled. His overall record is 256 wins, 135 losses, five NFL championships, two Section 6 championships, and five NFL Sportsmanship Awards. In 2012, a lot of you remember, they went all the way to the state finals and lost eight to six. Unbelievable without his top pitcher, who was hurt all through the whole sectionals and the states. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Dean Santorio, one of the West New York Deans as far as football goes. He's one of the older ones, believe it or not, look at him. He lives about 35. So Dean, come on up.
I certainly didn't feel 35. Thank you. I appreciate it. Wasn't expecting that. I appreciate it. And to the school board, Dr. Graham, thank you very much for recognizing all of our fall athletes and our teams. Obviously, we got some great coaches who do wonderful things for our kids. But I told our kids at our banquet that hopefully, we're not recognized or defined as coaches or as teams by our wins and losses. We all want to win. Obviously, we work hard to be that. But hopefully, we're defined by the character that we show, not just on the field, but in the community and at the school. And hopefully, I told our kids, we're defined by what you see at the end of the season, by the love they show each other when they know it's all over. That's what's most important. So obviously, wins are great, but it's not the only thing. I think our greatest team accomplishment this year, we were 6-0 in our league. We were the number-one seed in the sectional playoffs. We unfortunately lost a close overtime game, which was a heartbreaker in terrible weather. And it's always disappointing whether you lose in the first round or in the sectional finals. But we had a great group of kids. We said as coaches, we're maybe the most enjoyable group we've ever had as kids themselves. But our greatest accomplishment, we were able to lead the league in scoring points per game at 45 and a half points per game. We also gave up the fewest in the league points per game at 7 and a half points per game. So obviously, great accomplishment as a team. We had a number of all-league performers. We have some that couldn't be here because of basketball and hockey. But our quarterback, Justin Horvath, was first-team all-league. Running back, Ryan Bealik, who's here, stand-up, first-team all-league. High receiver, Tyler Figliola, was first-team all-league. One of our linebackers, Josh Malabar, was first-team all-league. Liam Snyder could not be here, playing hockey. He was the linebacker, first-team all-league. One of our offensive linemen, Sean Mesmer, who's here, is first-team all-league. And our kicker, Spencer Hack, who's here, was first-team all-league. Here in the fourth round. Our second-team all-league performers, the senior offensive lineman, Isaac Quick, could not be here because of basketball. One of our offensive linemen, Matt Grizzo, second-team all-league. Center, who's a sophomore, second-team all-league, Doug Crowley. Same being, a sophomore, Brayden Willetts. We also have two honorable mention all-league players. One could not be here, senior Joe Dukowski at cornerback, and offensive lineman who's here, Michael Christiansen. As far as end-of-the-year awards, Justin Horvath, who threw 25 touchdown passes, only three interceptions, 1,700 yards passing, was Class A North Offensive Player of the Year. Justin Horvath, Brian Bealik, and Tyler Figliola were all named today, actually, to the Niiger Gazette All-Area Team. So they're three out of 11 kids in mostly the Niiger region plus Grand Island. So that's quite an accomplishment. Jackson Jones, who could not be here tonight, and I am sorry, I miss Jackson Jones. Jackson Jones, defensive back, was also first-team all-league. He's out of town. But Jackson Jones also won the All-Caracter Team through cross-training football, which is all based on character. So he won that. Justin Horvath and Tyler Figliola also were named to the Academic All-West New York Team. So congratulations to those guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations. And you talk about some outstanding young people in this audience. So respectful. Every time they see me, they come up, shake my hand, say, "How you doing, Mr. Roth?" It's such a breath of fresh air to see these scholar athletes, student athletes, and also all-leaguers, as you might guess. And just this weekend, from what I hear, was Brian Bealik. He won the championship in Syracuse, was it? Phoenix tournament? What weight? 172. Congratulations. I promised you I would announce our All-Stars in the other sports, and by no means did we have anything negative about any of the other sports. In fact, we got so many positive vibes out of the rest of the programs that weren't championship teams. And as Michelle mentioned, and, you know, these kids, they work so hard each and every day. Girls volleyball, Coach Amy Boute and her JV coach Heidi Jank is here. They finished second in the Niiger Frontier League to Niiger Wheatfield. Niiger Wheatfield went all the way to the state finals. Our boys soccer, coached by Frank Butcher. Best record in the Niiger Frontier League. He just happened to lose the biggest game of the year in regards to the Niiger Frontier League, and they lost in the crossover against Niiger Wheatfield, I think. Am I right on that? Yeah, I think so. Yep. I should know that. But I'll start it off with the boys soccer. And I don't know how many are here, but I saw, I saw a couple of them. Third-team NFL All-Star, Kaito McGee and Angelo Aiello. Second-team All-NFL, we got Jacob JV and Sam JV. First-team All-NFL, we have Sean Graham and we have Anthony Amato. And both Sean and Anthony were named to the All-West New York Team. So congratulations to the boys soccer team. They still had a wonderful year. They went all the way to the section class B1 finals. So congratulations. I also will pinch-hit for my golf coach, Ryan Donnelly, in his first year in golf. He was, he's on a mission, taking it over for Greg Worthing for so many years. He's on a mission, working already in the offseason, and he's also my assistant hockey coach and modified baseball coach. And this is what these guys do. They work very hard all year round. He had one first, no, no, it wasn't first-team all-league. It was a second-team all-leaguer, but it was Dylan Novak, who was playing basketball tonight, so he couldn't be with us. The last two teams, I'm going to have the coaches come up here. First-year coach for girls swimming and diving, Alicia Saprowski, in name and length. I know Alicia's here. So many positives came out of this year's girls swimming and diving team. They seemed to peak at the end of the year, and she had a couple all-leaguers, so I'll let her come up and introduce them.
Thank you, Dr. Graham and the board, for having us here. It is certainly awesome to be able to recognize these athletes. They put a lot of time and energy into what they do, and we're just here to support them and hopefully give them a good time while they're doing it. So I was happy to join the coaching crew this year and look forward to doing it in the future. I have two athletes here tonight, both of them juniors, so I'm super pumped to have them back next year. I have Anna Donley, who was named third NFL All-Team. Stand up here. And I have Holly Miller, also a junior, here, second-team NFL All-Star. Congratulations, girls, and thank you for having us here tonight.
Thanks, Alicia. Wonderful job this year. Congratulations to those two swimmers. It was in the 103 for Martin and Anna was in the 503. So very, very well done. Last but not least, we're going to call on our girls volleyball coach, Amy Boute. Her JV coach is here with her, Heidi Jank, and they will be, again, building the program. I know they will. Come on up, baby, here. Here's your All-Stars.
Thank you to the school board for listening to us kind of brag about our kids. I will also give a shout-out, and I think most of my sports and entertainment management class is in the audience tonight. So it's great to see how many amazing athletes we have at Grand Island. So volleyball, we had a successful season. Like Mr. Roth said, we did lose to Niiger Wheatfield, who seems to be our arch-nemesis, both at the JV and varsity level. So we plan to get them next year for sure. I want to spotlight some of my amazing athletes in the audience. So two of my three, well, all three of my seniors are here. Molly Leggett, Casey Godler, and Tom Chouf. They had a really hard job of coming back after a really short season, leaving behind some really great seniors who we graduated last year, who won the NFL. So to come back and kind of be the leaders was a huge accomplishment for them, and they did awesome. I also want to acknowledge Anna Kurtzels, who won third-team NFL this year as a starter. She's a sophomore. Two of our other All-Stars who aren't here tonight are Emma Santorio. She won second-team All-NFL. And Natalie Querero, who won first-team All-NFL as well. And my last shout-out is to Tess, who also won first-team NFL, also won fourth-team All-State for volleyball. And she has committed, she has committed to play volleyball at Clark City University, where she's going to be studying Environmental Studies and Policy. And I will tell you, this is like my first official season with these girls who I've coached for JV forever, and it was just a pleasure. And I'm so thankful to be coaching at a school that I graduated from with an athletic director, who is my athletic director. And so it's just really, it's a full-circle moment. And I also have to give a shout-out to Heidi Jank, my JV coach, who is my other half, and I'm so excited to start to build this program with her by my side. So thank you so much, girls. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Great job. And Molly, did we win?
Yeah.
1-0?
Yeah.
Way to go. Molly Leggett, she rushes here after her hockey game. I just want to thank the board and everyone for allowing us to just showcase all our outstanding athletes and our outstanding coaches and all the All-Stars, what we do every fall season. So thank you so much.
We're going to invite you all back for some cake. So go ahead and help yourselves. We have some cake for our scholar athletes. I'm very excited. I'm very grateful you can be my guest. My friend says she's...
Gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Rick Tims. Dr. Tims is well-known across New York State as a consultant to various educational finance entities, and he continues to provide a variety of research studies, developing projects, and strategic planning, as well as mentorship across the state. Dr. Tims retired as a district superintendent of Erie II Chautauqua Keteragus Boses. He also served as superintendent of Spencer Fork in Monroe County and in Oriskone Central School District in Oneida County. He served many years as the Oneida Boses superintendent's cabinet chair, and he was president of the Tri-County Super Tennis Association. Dr. Tims is a master of New York's complex education funding structure, as executive director of the statewide school finance consortium, which includes more than 400 school districts. Dr. Tims is a frequent presenter at workshops and conferences, and has written numerous articles on educational development, the use of data to improve instruction, and of course, educational finance. As president and CEO, Rick Tims Incorporated and RG Tims Advisory Group, he is a consultant to various educational finance entities, as I mentioned earlier. And over the past two years, Ruby and I have been concerned during the budget development about the steady decline in our reserves. After careful consideration, we decided to move on from our previous financial advisor and bring Dr. Tims on board as our new consultant. We have asked him to thoroughly review our finances and assist us with a long-range financial plan. Today, Dr. Tims has prepared a presentation that will outline two possible scenarios for us to consider as we look ahead in the budget development process in the weeks and months ahead. So without further ado, I welcome Dr. Tims.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here at Grand Island, and we've been working very hard. I want to thank, first of all, Brian and Ruby for bringing me on board. As you said, they were a little concerned about the reserves and some things in finance, and we've decided to take a look at just about every financial characteristic of the district in all the remainder. Particularly, I've got to thank Ruby, because I think morning, noon, and night, because I have her cell number, I have been calling here asking her questions for a long time. So if you've got a copy of my PowerPoint, I'll just run through it here with you. If you have any questions, just interrupt me on the way, and we'll see if we can go through this. One thing I'd like to point out is, is that we're going to come up with a couple plans for you to look at. But our data is not just kind of characterization of what we think is going on. I think you've got to be aware that we've got a number of pieces of data. For instance, if you look at page two, we use the actual submissions from the State Education Department, known as the ST3s. These are the official documents in the school district. And we've actually looked at your district currently and five years prior. We also take a look at the New York State Department of Education website for aid calculations. You are heavily state aid dependent. So when state aid is good, you seem to do better financially when it's not so good. And in the last few years, state aid has not been good to you. Matter of fact, you owe a considerable amount of money. We look at your external auditors reports for their recommendations. We also take a look at your capital expenses, because those are part of the tax cap. We take a look at all the capital project data, how you borrow money, how much you owe, how much you use, what your state aid is, all those types of things. We also take a look at the use of capital reserves and reserves in general, and your debt service schedules, because all this will affect your tax cap. We also look at all the other categories of state aid. I'm going to give you an example of the categories of state aid, and there are quite a few. It's interesting, listening to all the statistics you just heard, just over the beginning of the meeting. Now we're going to get into some really big numbers, and actually, there's a lot of data here, so it's probably going to take a little while for you to absorb it all. But this is a great start to look at some of this. As I said, I've interviewed, I think, Ruby so much, you know, I think she has got my cell number and hers, and we're in constant communication about the numbers. Also, I've had discussions with Dr. Graham as well, to keep him in the loop. And we've taken a look at not just your capital reserves for capital projects, but we've looked at all the reserves, because I think the use of the reserves actually spurred their interest in having me come on board. I've also taken a look at the reports for the controller's office, just to make sure the district can stay in compliance. And we've taken a look at some things called the appropriated fund balances and unappropriated fund balances, and I'm going to go over those with you and tell you I've got some recommendations, I think, how we can shore a few things up. And we've also looked at the teachers' retirement system and employees' retirement system pension rates. Now, it sounds like it's an obscure statistic, but it's really important, because those rates seem to be moving upward. And as salaries move upward and the rates move upward, it will put pressure on the school district's budget. So we want to talk about that. Now, the next piece of data, you've got a whole bunch of data on one sheet, so I'm going to go through it a little at a time. So I think the first thing we'll do is let's focus in on the top section only, the top third of the page, where we're talking about expenses. Now, I said we looked at the last five years worth of data on your district, and these are automatic submissions to the State Education Department. They're required. These are so required, that if they are not in, you cannot get state aid. So they definitely are placed in. They're the result also of your auditor's reports, so they're solid numbers. And you can see over the first column, basically, where it says approved general fund budget. This is the growth of your budget since the 1516 year. So you see 2016, that means that's June 30th of 16, the end of the school year. So if we look across that page, you'll see the budget's grown, at least an expense budget from $58 million to $63.6 as of the 1920 school year. Now, here's the important fact I think people do not understand about school district budgets. A school district budget is not what you want to spend. The school district budget must be big enough so that no matter what goes wrong, uncalculated or otherwise, you have enough money to cover it. So this means should a number of high-cost special needs kids come into the district, or you end up with some type of tragedy, or you know, bus catches on fire and you need a bus immediately, or things like this, you have enough money in your budget to pay for these things that are incalculable, that you cannot know are going to happen. So the key thing here is the expenses must be large enough to sustain any cost the district may incur. And the reason is very simple. You cannot tax more than once, and your state aid is frozen. So you have to have enough money in that budget. Now, having said that, you'll see there's a modified budget, and that's because you've had no modifications to your budget, which is a real plus for your district. A lot of times, districts play all kinds of screwiness with the money. This obviously proves you don't have that. So it's very straightforward. Your budget is very straightforward. That's important, transparency. Then we've got the actual expenditures. Now, we want the actual expenditures to be less than the budget expenditures. In other words, we're hoping for the best, right? But we're planning for the worst. So you want money left over every year. And if you'll notice, other than encumbrances, which are basically bills that can't be paid by June 30th, because the invoice hasn't arrived yet, you do have what they call expenditure variance, that's positive money left over. Now, the interesting thing about this is it has fluctuated a little bit, and we had a down year in the 1617 year, but other than that, it's been fairly stable. So in other words, your budget-to-actual-expense ratio is actually very stable, and that's what we want to see. So kudos to the district. The dilemma comes in the middle-third, where we're trying to come to grips with state aid. Let me explain. So you've got budgeted revenues across the top line underneath the revenue line, and then if we go down to the modified, it's only been modified once by $100, could have been a gift to the district. And then the actual revenues, you'll notice, come short in many years, and that's mostly because of state aid. Your district is known as underfunded in foundation aid. I don't know if you're aware of this. If you've been battling for more state aid for years, this is what the product of this is. In other words, you're hoping to get paid the amount of money that you're due, but the state really hasn't come forward. Now, I'm going to have some good news for you as we look at the prognosis for the future. The state is going to end up fully funding you over the next two years. So you'll start to see this imbalance start to go away. But most of this is state aid. Now, state aid is a tricky proposition, and I'll tell you why. It's very unpredictable in many ways. For instance, you know when you get those state aid runs, you all get them, as board members probably, Dr. Graham sends them out to you, and they look like they were sheets that were photocopyed in April about 30,000 times? You can barely read them, ever seen them, they're black and white. Those are always wrong. And that's because they're based on data submitted by districts in January, but the state aid numbers aren't due until succeeding June. So they're an estimate by the state of your state aid. So one of the suggestions I made is we've got to start in our revenue picture, start underestimating state aid a little bit more, because those numbers tend to be unreliable. So what we actually have here, if we look at the one called modified-to-modified summary, there's been a couple years where really, what we've had is our revenues were short compared to our expenditures, and we're trying to avoid that into the future. So it's difficult for the state aid right now to plan it, but we're going to try and do a better job at it. But the one that's really important too, I think that's very telling about your district, is the next set of numbers called the actual-to-actual summary. So here we have actual expenditures next to actual revenues. and he was President of the Tri-County Super Tenors Association. Dr. Timms is a Master of New York's Complex Education Funding Structure as Executive Director of the Statewide School Finance Consortium, which includes more than 400 school districts. Dr. Timms is a frequent presenter at workshops and conferences and has written numerous articles on educational development, the use of data to improve instruction, and of course, educational finance. As President and CEO, Rick Timms Incorporated and RG Timms Advisory Group, he is a consultant to various educational finance entities, as I mentioned earlier. And over the past two years, Ruby and I have been concerned during the budget development about the steady decline in our reserves. After careful consideration, we decided to move on from our previous financial advisor and bring Dr. Timms onboard as our new consultant. We have asked him to thoroughly review our finances and assist us with a long-range financial plan. Today, Dr. Timms has prepared a presentation that will outline two possible scenarios for us to consider as we look ahead in the budget development process in the weeks and months ahead. So without further ado, I welcome Dr. Timms.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here at Grand Island, and we've been working very hard. I want to thank, first of all, Brian and Ruby for bringing me onboard. As you said, they were a little concerned about the reserves and some things in finance. And we've decided to take a look at just about every financial characteristic of the district in all the remaining. Particularly, I've got to thank Ruby because I think morning, noon, and night, because I have her cell number, I have been calling here asking her questions for a long time. So if you've got a copy of my PowerPoint, I'll just run through it here with you. If you have any questions, just interrupt me on the way, and we'll see if we can go through this. One thing I'd like to point out is that we're going to come up with a couple of plans for you to look at. But our data is not just kind of a characterization of what we think is going on. I think you've got to be aware that we've got a number of pieces of data. For instance, if you look at page two, we use the actual submissions from the State Education Department, known as the ST3s. These are the official documents of the school district. And we've actually looked at your district currently and five years prior. We also take a look at the New York State Department of Education website for aid calculations. You are heavily state aid dependent. So when state aid is good, you seem to do better financially when it's not so good. And in the last few years, state aid has not been good to you. Matter of fact, you owe a considerable amount of money. We look at your external auditors reports for their recommendations. We also take a look at your capital expenses because those are part of the tax cap. We take a look at all the capital project data, how you borrow money, how much you owe, how much you use, what your state aid is, all those types of things. We also take a look at the use of capital reserves and reserves in general, and your debt service schedules, because all this will affect your tax cap. We also look at all the other categories of state aid. I'm going to give you an example of the categories of state aid, and there are quite a few. It's interesting listening to all the statistics you've just heard just over the beginning of the meeting. Now we're going to get into some really big numbers. And actually, there's a lot of data here, so it's probably going to take a little while for you to absorb it all. But this is a great start to look at some of this. As I said, I've interviewed, I think, Ruby so much. You know, I think she has got my cell number and hers, and we're in constant communication about the numbers. Also, I've had discussions with Dr. Graham as well, to keep him in the loop. And we've taken a look at not just your capital reserves for capital projects, but we've looked at all the reserves because I think the use of the reserves actually spurred their interest in having me come onboard. I've also taken a look at the reports for the Controller's Office just to make sure the district can stay in compliance. And we've taken a look at some things called the appropriated fund balances and unappropriated fund balances. And I'm going to go over those with you and tell you I've got some recommendations, I think, how we can shore a few things up. And we've also looked at the teachers' retirement system and employees' retirement system pension rates. Now, it sounds like it's an obscure statistic, but it's really important because those rates seem to be moving upward. And as salaries move upward and the rates move upward, it will put pressure on the school district's budget. So we want to talk about that. Now, the next piece of data, you've got a whole bunch of data on one sheet, so I'm going to go through it a little at a time. So I think the first thing we'll do is let's focus in on the top section only, the top third of the page where we're talking about expenses. Now, I said we looked at the last five years worth of data on your district, and these are automatic submissions to the State Education Department. They're required. These are so required that if they are not in, you cannot get state aid. So they definitely are placed in. They're the result also of your auditors reports, so they're solid numbers. And you can see over the first column, basically, where it says approved general fund budget. This is the growth of your budget since the 2015-16 year. So you see 2016, that means that's June 30th of 16, the end of the school year. So if we look across that page, you'll see the budget's grown at least an expense budget from $58 million to $63.6 as of the 1920 school year. Now, here's the important fact I think people do not understand about school district budgets. A school district budget is not what you want to spend. The school district budget must be big enough so that no matter what goes wrong, uncalculated or otherwise, you have enough money to cover it. So this means should a number of high-cost special needs kids come into the district, or you end up with some type of tragedy, or you know, bus catches on fire and you need a bus immediately, or things like this, you have enough money in your budget to pay for these things that are incalculable, that you cannot know are going to happen. So the key thing here is the expenses must be large enough to sustain any cost the district may incur. And the reason is very simple. You cannot tax more than once, and your state aid is frozen. So you have to have enough money in that budget. Now, having said that, you'll see there's a modified budget, and that's because you've had no modifications to your budget, which is a real plus for your district. A lot of times, districts play all kinds of screwiness with the money. This obviously proves you don't have that. So it's very straightforward. Your budget is very straightforward. That's important, transparency. Then we've got the actual expenditures. Now, we want the actual expenditures to be less than the budget expenditures. In other words, we're hoping for the best, right? But we're planning for the worst. So you want money left over every year. And if you'll notice, other than encumbrances, which are basically bills that can't be paid by June 30th because the invoice hasn't arrived yet, you do have what they call an expenditure variance, it's positive money left over. Now, the interesting thing about this is it has fluctuated a little bit, and we had a down year in the 16-17 year. But other than that, it's been fairly stable. So in other words, your budget-to-actual-expense ratio is actually very stable, and that's what we want to see. So kudos to the district. The dilemma comes in the middle third where we're trying to come to grips with state aid. Let me explain. So you've got budgeted revenues across the top line underneath the revenue line. And then if we go down to the modified, it's only been modified once, by a hundred dollars, could have been a gift to the district. And then the actual revenues, you'll notice, come short in many years. And that's mostly because of state aid. Your district is known as underfunded in foundation aid. I don't know if you're aware of this. If you've been battling for more state aid for years, this is what the product of this is. In other words, you're hoping to get paid the amount of money that you're due, but the state really hasn't come forward. Now, I'm going to have some good news for you as we look at the prognosis for the future. The state is going to end up fully funding you over the next two years. So you'll start to see this imbalance start to go away. But most of this is state aid. Now, state aid is a tricky proposition, and I'll tell you why. It's very unpredictable in many ways. For instance, you know when you get those state aid runs? You all get them as board members, probably. Dr. Graham sends them out to you. And they look like they were sheets that were photocopyed in April about 30,000 times. You can barely read them. Ever seen them? They're black and white. Those are always wrong. And that's because they're based on data submitted by districts in January, but the state aid numbers aren't due until succeeding June. So they're an estimate by the state of your state aid. So one of the suggestions I made is we've got to start in our revenue picture, start underestimating state aid a little bit more because those numbers tend to be unreliable. So what we actually have here, if we look at the one called modified-to-modified summary, there's been a couple of years where really what we've had is our revenues were short compared to our expenditures. And we're trying to avoid that into the future. So it's difficult for the state aid right now to plan it, but we're going to try and do a better job at it. But the one that's really important too, I think, that's very telling about your district, is the next set of numbers called the actual-to-actual summary. So here we have actual expenditures next to actual revenues. Never mind regardless of what you budgeted, are you actually spending more than you're taking in? And this is where I think Dr. Graham and Ruby basically kind of wanted to contact me saying, "Yeah, we are. We're spending more than we're taking in, and we're eating reserves. Is there any way to stabilize this condition?" And I think there is. And this happens in a lot of districts. And that's because the wants in a district usually outstrip the actual revenues that they have. So they tend to rely on these reserves. And what we want to do is stop the drain of the reserves. Now, also, your signed appropriate fund balance has been pretty stable, if you'll notice. I'm going to make some suggestions because I think it looks stable on paper, but it's not as stable as it looks because we're starting to tap those reserves. So I think it's presenting a skewed number. But right now, what we're really worried about is how do we stop the drain of reserves? We start budgeting so that we actually have a little safety valve in there in case things go wrong, because I think there's going to be some state funding cliffs in the future. You have some federal grants that you're eligible for, and I think we've got to change how we're using some of those to help you build your reserves. Because after those federal grants go away in about three years, that's going to be another funding cliff for you. So I think we save now to make sure we have a better future. So I go to the next page, which is really state aid. And what I've got here on the state aid page is a lot of numbers. But let me just explain to you the highlights. These are all the categories of state aid your district is eligible for. So you can imagine in the business office, it's got to be a lot of paperwork to file for all this state aid. Let's focus in on the first one, foundation aid at the top. Foundation aid is the biggest category of aid, and this is the one you've been underpaid for years. I'd say you have been underpaid in foundation aid since 2007. So you've always been shorted in foundation aid. Now, let's just take a look at some numbers here. If you look at the 2021 and 2122, you'll see there's a bonus foundation aid bringing you into this year by $662,000. You see that? Now, that amount in April was a different number. And the amount a couple of months before that was a different number there too. But now, it's the real number. But the problem is you had to build a budget a year and a half before you knew the real number. So this is what's becoming problematic for all school districts. But let's go to the 22-23 year, and the difference now jumps up to $1,103,000. Everyone see that? What's going on there is the state has finally recognized, the governor has signed into law, and the legislature's passed into the budget, law that says they must pay up all school districts that are owed money currently to the amount that they're owed for the current years, for the next two years. So you'll notice there's a $1,103,000 increase over the next two years. You see that? So the good thing there, that's going to help you with that revenue picture we talked about, because they're finally going to pay you the money they owe you. The shame is, is they're not going to go back and pay you all the money they owe you. They're going to start paying you correctly, starting now, next year. Not this year, next year. And they're going to do it for two more years. But my dilemma is, if you'll notice, look at the last two orange numbers. It drops down considerably. And that's because we don't know what your state aid will be then. You will be what they call a fully funded. So the big question is, what are they going to pay you? So what we did is we took an arbitrary 2.5%. And the reason we used that number is because all districts that were fully funded in the current year were paid at somewhere between a 2% increase and a 3% increase. So we took the average at 2.5. Seems reasonable. We don't want, remember, overestimate state aid. So that's the foundation aid picture. So things are looking up temporarily. The next one I'm going to talk about is you've got your building aid. You can see it down here. If you go down, it's about the fifth one down. And you'll see the building aid is dropping, and it's dropping precipitously. Everyone see that? Start to see the building aid. Go across the page, you'll start seeing red numbers. And that's because what's happening is you're paying off debt. And of course, now you're planning a new capital project. Now, if you do the new capital project based on the parameters we've given the district earlier, we believe you'll simply fill that number in, and that will flatten out. So that should help with the revenues. Because you would get building aid on the new project. So we think we can take care of some of that problem. The next set to go down and look at is the one called public high-cost aid and private high-cost aid. These are students with special needs that are profoundly disabled that are in unbelievably expensive programs. Now, you could say to yourself, "Well, look, we're getting $300,000 or $400,000 in these programs. Isn't that good?" Well, I must tell you, it might cost between $800,000 to get $400,000 in aid because this is only a partial reimbursement. But these children are probably most deserving and most needy among all of us, and therefore, the district has obviously mission obligation to take care of them. If we go down even further, you're going to see there's a cluster of aids called software, library, textbook, and so on. And you've had a little dip in some enrollments, so it went down a little bit. But we predict looking at your enrollment is going to snap back up, so that should hold stable. That's a per-student amount. The next one is yellow. You'll see it says universal pre-K. And you're getting $110,823 as a carrot to help you do a pre-K program. You'll notice the state really wants you to have a pre-K program so that now they boosted the eligibility to 478. So I believe that you will be using that 478 in your pre-K program. But here's the part that's interesting. That money is not part of your general fund when it comes in. There's a special fund that that must go in. For instance, the federal grants will go into the same fund. The name of the fund is the Special Aid Fund. School districts vote on a general fund budget, then there's a special aid fund for federal aid and UTK. There's also a school lunch fund, and there's a capital fund, all used by your district for specific purposes. So in the bottom line, if you look at underneath total aid, I've actually subtracted that aid out because it's not part of your general fund. All right? So just so you can see, what the state likes to do is add these aid categories so you end up with a large total, but it's not really your total aid. In other words, it's in a different category. So the state looks great, and then you've got to sort it out. So that's your state aid picture. As you can see, we've got it moving along. It's growing a little bit, perhaps mostly in the next two years. But the next graph is the one I think that Dr. Graham and Ruby brought me in on. And this is the use of the reserves. And if you look at that graph, this is actually what's going on so far in the use of your reserves. I've put a line straight up and down in June of '22 where we may end up. And what's actually happening here is, I think, as they watch the district's finances over time, they were seeing that the district had a heavy dependency on use of recruiters over time and that the reserves were being exhausted. So what we wanted to do is come up with a plan that would actually fortify the district's reserves, kind of like a live to fight another day type of idea. Now, if you'll notice, the reserves that are listed here are unemployment reserve, the reserve for employee benefits accrued liability, reserve for debt. By the way, that reserve for debt is supposed to be exhausted by law. Right? That reserve is supposed to go down. It's required to go down. And of course, the other one is reserve for retirement contributions. We're trying to bolster that up. You see a little plane that moved that up a little bit? That's because those retirement and pension costs are starting to escalate. And then we've got a capital reserve which you exhausted in the last capital project. But I want to talk to you about capital reserves for the future. So if we look at the next page, you'll see there's a list of reserves here. And we've got all kinds of reserves in here. The first one is the works compensation reserve. You're not required to have it, and you do not have it. And there's no problem in not having it. If you have surplus funds, you could put some in. But it's not like a reserve that's desired that you must have, so that's okay. The unemployment insurance reserve is the next one. Now, one of the things we talk about when we're talking about exhausting reserves, we should probably also talk about balancing reserves. In other words, is the money in the right spot? So one of my recommendations I'll have at the end of this program is basically that I think over next year, probably next June or May, I would transfer some money out of unemployment, and I would actually put it into the one that's listed at the second one down there, the yellow one, called the TRS reserve. I don't have it highlighted. The other one's all yellow. I think you ought to start with TRS reserve because that pension cost is starting to accelerate pretty rapidly. So that might be a recommendation for next time. But you do have enough money, I think, right now, to reserve for retirement contributions. And that's for what they call ERS employees, not certified staff. So it would be cleaners, bus drivers, custodians, things like that, who are not certified staff. In other words, they don't belong to the teacher's retirement system. So that's what I would take a look at there. If you'll notice, you have nothing in the property loss liability insurance reserve, and you're not required to, nor should you have to. This is for districts that really have these types of problems. I've got districts that are clients that, for instance, have constant flooding and cannot get flood insurance. Okay? So they start a property insurance reserve because they, you know, some creek out there that FEMA hasn't fixed or something yet keeps causing amnesia. Some people actually have some of these reserves for the insurance reserve or the liability insurance reserve or liability reserve because there are claims under the Child Victims Act. I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's where if any student or a staff member that ever went to Grand Island, attended Grand Island at any time, felt that they were perhaps sexually abused during any point in their life, they could sue the district. So you have no claims, so there's no reason for a reserve for those right now. You have minimal tax beneficiary claims, and therefore, you have a minimal reserve. And you've got what's known as the Reserve for Employee Benefits accrued liability. In the vernacular, we call it EBLI, because I didn't think we want to keep saying the whole term. So what actually happens here, this is a reserve to choose to pay employees upon severance from the district for sick personal and vacation days. If you'll notice, that reserve has been going down every year. I'm suggesting we start to budget some of that money instead of tapping the reserve. In other words, we start calculating those absences and see if we can add some of those costs to the budget. Because once that reserve is depleted, it will have a huge negative effect on your budget, so we should plan ahead. Now, the next three are capital reserves. You'll see you have a small one there that's been exhausted. And then you'll see there's two more that there's nothing there, and that's because you didn't have them. But capital reserves are miraculous reserves. Let me tell you a little bit about that. Capital reserves can actually do a couple of things. You can have a capital reserve for capital construction. You can have a capital reserve for equipment. You can have a capital reserve for the purchase of buses. You can have a capital reserve for the purchase of vehicles and plows and stake-rack trucks or lawnmowers. You can have a capital reserve for classroom equipment. And that's also what worries me, not only the loss of the reserves, but if you don't have reserves here, I think we ought to build some. Because the cost of those items is escalating rapidly. Only a few years ago, a 67-passenger bus was $100,000. It's over $130,000 now in a pot. So they become very expensive. Now, capital reserve for capital construction. I know you're thinking about a capital project now, but let's think also the future. The interesting thing about a capital reserve for construction is really amazing because the state actually helps you with this. If you started a capital reserve for capital construction, and let's just say it was a reserve for, I don't know, $5 million for 10 years for capital construction, surplus funds could be put into it. If you did, let's say, a $10 million project, and you used $2 million of that capital reserve and left the other three sitting there, you could use two of them. You would get aid on the $10 million you spent on a project, of which two is your own money. So you will get aid on your own money plus interest to help you rebuild the reserve. It's a state incentive. So I think that's something we should look for in the future if we're going to continue to do capital projects. School districts across the state are aging, even though they do capital projects, the price of roofs and doors and windows and safety equipment and so on, tends to go up. So there's always capital projects going out. But I think we really need a long-range plan. I know that your architects, I was sitting in on the board meeting not too long ago, where they talked about your long-range capital plan. I think we ought to match it with some savings, see if we can do that. But also, you know, trucks need plows, and stake-rack trucks, and they've got their vehicles and pickup trucks, and they've got ground smoothing and all kinds of stuff. And you have multiple campuses, so I think we should plan that. You can also have a capital reserve for technology, if you wish. For instance, maybe using the Smart Schools Act, you bought a bunch of laptops or iPads or something like that. You have a bunch of fermetion boards or Lloydboards all over the district. You know, those wear out, and over time, you have to replace them. So the big question is, what's the plan? I think one of my jobs has been, as your financial advisor, is to constantly ask questions. Because remember, this is not just long-range planning. The key to long-range planning is long-range analysis. In other words, we don't want to be thinking five years from now what we would have, could have, shouldn't have. We want to start planning ahead. So maybe you want to buy some technology or something five years up. Well, maybe we can plan for that too. Now, you have no reserve for repairs, which is my least favorite reserve. And that's because it's a pain in the neck to use, and it can only be used for repairs, and repairs are non-edable. So if you don't want to fix a roof, you want to replace it. Because if you fix it, it doesn't usually have a long warranty. But if you replace it, you can get a 15- to 25-year warranty. So and besides, it's state aid eligible. The state will support the effort to put a new roof on, but the state will not support you repairing a roof. So your best bet for the taxpayers to get something done is to really put it in capital. Now, you've got a reserve for debt. As I mentioned earlier, this is a reserve that's required to be used. And if you'll notice, the amount of this reserve has dropped pretty substantially, and the plan is to keep it dropping. Now, I think this is also a reason for the depletion of the reserves. And I think this is why Dr. Graham and Ruby said to me, "Hey, what are we going to do about this?" Well, the big problem we've got here is twofold. One is, is that we're dropping at a pretty big clip here. So I wish we were dropping it a little smaller. Matter of fact, we've made a recommendation to the district that if we could drop maybe $100,000 less this current year and move it over to two years from now, it would actually ease the burden on the tax gap. The dilemma is using a reserve for debt, which is supposed to be used every year, actually reduces the tax liability because what the district is saying is, "Gee, we don't want to tax for the project or tax for the capital cost. Let us pay for it." Well, what happens is you're running out of money trying to help everybody out. So remember, the goal of the Board of Education, not the goal of Board of Finance here. The Board of Education is to sustain this system. So the idea is to increase its longevity. So one of our suggestions would be, and for your new capital project, we have provided a plan whereby you will actually have a new reserve for debt, and we will drag that reserve for debt out over 15 years to pace it out. This way, here, what will happen is you will help the taxpayers, but you'll also help the district survive to fight another day so you can maintain your fund balances in a more stable way. Now, at the bottom of this page, there's something that's really kind of interesting and I want to point out to you. And that is this bus purchase is banned. See how it says banned bond anticipation note? Now, I'm supposed to act as a fiduciary. Yeah, I don't know. You know my background as a superintendent and business official. Actually, I was even an athletic director for a year and a half, believe it or not. So I've had every job. I was a principal. I was a teacher. You know, I did all the coaching, both in. But what I do know is that cash is king. You know, I wish I could buy a house cash. Because just think, all the money I'd save. Because once you buy a house for 20 years, and your mortgage is usually double the cost of the house. Same thing with your product. So what I'd like to do is start experimenting and seeing if we could come up with a plan that we would actually stop buying, using bans on anticipation notes to buy buses and start buying one per year more cash, if possible, to see if we'd get it in a budget. Now, we'll have to ramp into this because it's going to have a tax gap impact. Now, we'll have to ramp into this because it's going to have a tax gap impact. It's going to put a jolt on your tax gap, to be honest with you. But cash is king. So instead of paying my firm money to go borrow money to buy your bus, how about you don't pay me anything, but you go buy your bus in cash? Then you get your aid over five years as you normally would, plus interest as if you borrowed. Therefore, further decreasing the actual cost of the bus to you. So I think we would like to try something like that, to try and see if we can work it in over the next couple of years, a bus here, a bus there, to see if we can do it. We'll have to do it slowly because you're buying buses at a big rate because you're a larger district. Notice that the cost is eight, six eighty-five, and it goes up to seven, six and five. A common trick I plan business officials all the time is, give me a five-year schedule for buses, and then some business official will say, well, we're going to spend four hundred thousand a year on buses. So then I say, to be a smarty pants, oh, so we're buying less buses. They say, no, we're buying four hundred thousand, but the cost of the buses are going up. So if we stabilize the cost, you are going to have to buy less buses. So the key thing is, if this is how many buses you need, the price will go up. Buses are becoming more expensive, and they're becoming what's known as long lead items. In other words, it takes a little longer to get them than it used to before because of the supply chain. So that's something we would recommend too. Now, let's go to a couple scenarios here for you. Now, this is going to get complicated very quickly, so try and stay with me and try not to get ahead of me. If you could just stay on the same age I'm on, I think we'll do better. Okay? Because this gets complicated quick. Are we ready? Okay, here we go. So I have a scenario on the top. Now, your last tax increase was three point two, and I'm just going to keep it at three point two. No matter what the tax gap comes out, we're going to leave it at three point two, just to make sure that's stated. But you'll get the point as we go on. State aid slight but stable increase. I showed you that already on the state aid page. Variable transportation aid because of the buses that you're going to be buying. Building aid follows your debt service schedule. I showed you that. The federal aid remains stable. Now, when we say federal aid, in your budget, the federal aid line is Medicaid. It's not those federal grants. Those are in a separate budget. Federal grants are a separate budget. Now, your expenditures are going to follow your contractual obligations. And remember, you have collective bargaining units, and you actually have to abide by those rules, and what the races have to be that have been negotiated and so on. I've got no notable change in staff patterns. What I mean by that is, chances are your staff ratio to students is not going to change much. You're going to still need the staff you've got. You're very happy with the staff you have. If people leave, I believe you probably want to replace them and keep the great program going. That's what I think you're going to try and do. Stable ERS and TRS with increased costs. In other words, stable, gentle increase in those costs. Now, remember how pension systems work, and this buys pension contractual obligations. So let's just use some examples. If I'm going to charge a pension rate against you, or a certain rate against your pay, if you get an increase in pay and there's also an increase in the pension rate, then the cost is going to go up a lot greater than if only one of them had moved. In other words, let me give you an example. So let's just say you're making forty thousand dollars a year, and they give you a three percent raise. And the pension system used to be at nine percent, now it's at nine and a half. You can imagine your cost will go up because you gave the raise at the same time as the pension system. This is what's going on in New York, so you're going to get an increased cost, but over time. Now, here's what we're doing. Normally, some districts do with the new funds, the new federal funds, the ARBA funds and the CHRISFunds. You've been studying those, I know. Is what they do is they simply pay people out of federal funds because they're encouraged to do so, and then they hire more people and they supplement their staff. So they do those two things. So this scenario is going to represent that, but this is the revenue side of the scenario. And if you'll notice, look at the total revenues. They're going for about sixty-two, six million at the bottom to about seventy million, which is a twelve, twelve percent increase. Everybody see how that works? Okay, let's see. Okay. Okay, so now let's go through the expenditures. So to make it easy on you, I carried over revenues from the previous page on the top. Everybody see that? All right, now let's go through those expenditures. Once we get through one of these, the other scenario we use. I've divided up your expenses into major categories. General support, instruction, transportation, community service, employee benefits, debt service, and then some other categories. So let's just talk about this quickly. What's in general support? General support would be superintendent's office, the board's functions and costs. It would be the business office. It would be the school's attorney. It would be the external auditor. It would be the district treasurer. It would be the district clerk. It would be all the people that work in those offices, all the equipment they buy, all the computers they have, all the copiers they have, all the printing they do. But also a big part is all the cleaning, custodial, and maintenance is in there. Groundskeeping is in there. Supplies, materials, gas for all those folks, materials, cleaning materials, mobs, all that stuff. Wax, paint, everything is in general support. So we divided between salaries and other because you have contractual obligations, and we did the same thing with instruction. But some instruction, it's not just teachers. Your principals are in there, guidance counselors, the school nurses in there. All right, social workers are in there. The ELO teachers are in there. Special ed is in there. OCS is in there. So anybody that talks to, works with, sees, or somehow identifies with the educational program is in there. The librarians, guidance, and so on. And we separate those salaries now. Transportation, pretty easy. Bus drivers, mechanics, exhaust car mechanic, and so on. Those are in the transportation section. Salaries now. Community service, any community programs you put on. And then we have employee benefits for all the employees. If you've noticed, you don't have to be a Rhodes Scholar, but if you just look at the salary lines and start adding them up in your head, three million, twenty-seven million makes it thirty-two, thirty-two. Then go through the retirement, thirty-five, thirty-six. Go through social security, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Workers' comp, forty. Health, forty-nine. Other, say around fifty million. Out of a total budget of sixty-seven million. So almost everything is connected to people. So most of your budget is connected to the employees in some way. And then we look at your debt service schedule. If you look at the debt service schedule going across the page, the principal interest you see is changing as your old capital projects paid off and therefore leaves room for you except a new capital project. And you've got the buses, say, thing, interest, principal, and you've got a Voces capital project in there. But you have zeros in the line called rand tan. And that is really, really important. Rand is a revenue anticipation note, revenue anticipation note. Tan is a tax anticipation note. You have zero money in there. That's perfect. That means that you have adequate cash flow to fund your district. Every year, you don't have to borrow money to survive. That's wonderful. And I put that in. You can say, well, you can have left it out because there's nothing there. But I have to put it in to show you you didn't need them, which is a good thing. And then we have interfund transfers, and your interfund transfers could be for capital outlay or what they call forty-four oh eight, which would be summer school special ed kids, and then food service, which is your cafeteria. Then we have your total expenses. So technically, that's what we've got. So the problem we've got here is that the revenues are going up twelve percent, but the expenses are going up thirteen point seven. Everybody seeing the problem? Over time? So this is why you would need reserves to keep the reserves, so you could fall back on those to make enough debt difference. Now, the other situation we've got here is the carryover funds. Now, we've actually gone through your required budget almost line by line, this at the end of last year, and we found that you carry over three point eight million. But if you'll notice, the next line down is the blue line. It goes down to three million, seven sixty-six. And that's because a lot of your carryover this year is bigger than your carryover in previous years because of COVID. You didn't have the buses going a hundred and eighty-three days a year with all the bus drivers and all the mechanics and all the gas and all the heating and the lighting and electricity. You didn't have all the cleaning staff going, cleaning everything every single day as if the kids were here. You didn't have a whole bunch of substitutes. You didn't have a whole bunch of people out sick. You didn't have all those expenses. So you've got a little bonish year, if you get my drift, in terms of the money you didn't spend compared to other years. All right? Now, if you'll notice, there's red numbers in the twenty-two budget. See the red numbers? What the district has done is two things. One, they have used the federal grants, ARPA and CHRISFunds, to supplement. In other words, get some extra staff to help the kids out of the summer school programs, after school, and so on. But they've also used the federal monies to ease the burden on the budget. So what has actually happened, those red numbers represent decreases of where the budget would have been for this year had that federal grant not come in. Those numbers would have all been higher. Everybody with me? It would have been higher. So the federal grant has helped you. But the dilemma is underneath that little blue line, we've got a little orange line, and this is that use of the debt service, which is actually taking money out of the reserves. Now, it's supposed to. But you'll notice the volume is pretty good. I wish the volume was like maybe, you know, fifty thousand a year instead of nine hundred and sixty. And I hope maybe we can do a little less than nine hundred and sixty this year. Because what we want to do is make that last a little bit longer. So we've got that little drain on our reserves going out. Now, it's supposed to occur, but I just wish the magnitude was just a little smaller. So now we have the problem with twenty-five here. See, the dilemma is, is when the federal grants start actually paying for some of these people like they're supposed to help you with, what the feds forgot was, is that what happens when the grant goes away? If these people come back into the budget, they're going to cause havoc to the budget because now they're going to make the budget get bigger faster out of the blue. So everybody understand the dilemma here? So this is really what we want to try and avoid, so I have another plan for how to get around this. But the key thing is, is those red numbers would then make things a little worse since these people came back into the budget. So in other words, you have a great temporary plan, but the long-range plan isn't going to work so well. And I could prove it to you. If you look at that, what I call the bottom boxes down there, you'll see a whole bunch of stuff at the bottom. First of all, you've got, the very, very bottom is called the revenue to expenditure difference. And you'll notice it goes from one point nine million to five million. Now, why is that? That's because the district was cleaning reserves as revenues. And my point would be is, you don't need to declare the reserves as revenue unless you actually need them as revenue. And right now, you don't need them as revenue, so we're not going to declare them as revenue. So I think we have to clean that part up. So that's called the appropriated fund balance. Now, if you notice, there's an arrow going from that five million, two fifteen, up and diagonally to a positive number five, two fifteen. You do have enough money right now that you can balance that out. But the key thing is, is that what you're going to do to your reserves, because if you need five, two fifteen to balance the budget, but you can only carry over the blue number of three point eight million, you will still be short. Everybody understand what I'm getting at? You will still need more money. Therefore, look at your reserves between twenty-one and twenty-two. They're going to have to go down. In other words, we're going to have to tap them. So despite the district's best effort to use some of the federal funds to help balance that budget, it's really not quite enough, so we're going to have to use them more. And if you'll notice, look at that reserve line. It actually goes from three point seven million to three point one. So as those people come back, it really makes a hit on your reserves, and you really just can't survive. In other words, you're really not gaining anything for long term. Everybody see where I'm going? In other words, you're just kind of like balancing it. But there is a way out. Let's go to the next page, page nine, scenario two. Now, this one, I'm using the same assumptions in the revenue side, but I'm going to change how we do it in the expense side. In other words, what we're going to do is we're going to remain sustained staff in the budget and use the federal money longer until it is exhausted, but to help you out. So in other words, this page nine is exactly to the two pages previous on the previous revenue page. In other words, I'm doing nothing with your revenues because you cannot change your revenues except for increased taxes. And most districts are into increased tax avoidance as much as possible. So what we're going to try and do is stabilize these revenues the way they are. But let me point out to you, the yellow line across there, we have the two point six six, and it says ERS, unemployment, EBL, debt service. You see that? You can't, we're not going to claim those anymore. In other words, the district's going to have to stop taking things out of their reserves. Instead, we want to build them instead of deplete them. Because you have nothing to fall back on when the federal funds are gone. So this is going to be our new plan. So if we go to page ten, here's the plan. So I brought over the revenues again, just the same, but now you'll see there's actually a huge box right over here inside that spreadsheet. Let me see if I can bring that up on the screen. I have your, that thing. Why is my finger is happy here? Right there. And what I suggest we do is we do more supplanting with the federal funds rather than just supplementing. Supplementing is good. That's the major purpose of the fund, but there is no adverse cause that you cannot start supplanting. Now, what's the difference between that other than spelling? Supplementing means you're going to take the federal money, you're going to add, we'll say, staff to your school district with the federal money. It's supposed to be a temporary fix because of COVID to bring the kids back up to school because of all the turmoil that occurred while the kids were on the roller. That's a good thing. The problem with that is, while the feds are trying to help you with that, there's a real-life consequence. And that is, after that money's gone, what do you do with those people? You say, okay, thanks, goodbye? I don't know of a school district that has ever jettisoned people up. So the big thing is, you may end up absorbing them to your budget, so what else can we do? Well, my suggestion is, we do more supplanting. Now, what's that mean? That means what you would do is you could pay people using the federal grants money to actually sustain your budget over time and then take your salaries and help you build fund balances. To cut to the chase, if you'll notice, look at the numbers on the bottom line. We have the nineteen fifty to one thousand nine, one million, nine fifty. That five million, if you scoop back two pages, you'll see it's a different number. And the four million after that, and so on. So technically speaking, what I would do is I would lighten up the load on your budget in terms of building fund balance with that federal money. Because once the federal money is gone, you don't want to be in a catch-22 where you tried to do the right thing and you have no money left. So what we want to do is look at the reserve line. It goes from three point nine to four point six. And that's going to be bringing the people back. So what you would actually do, you'll see I have depressed the total expenses temporarily to build fund balance, and therefore you could build up your reserves over the next two to three years. And that's all you have is two to three years. So you've got a whole bunch of things happening at once that I've talked about so far. Remember, I told you you're going to get a big boost in state aid over the next two years? What happens in the third year? Gone. You're going to get a big boosted federal aid with one category, the CHRISFunds, for three years. What happens in the fourth year? Poof, gone. The ARPA money, four years after that, poof, gone. So here's your chance to actually build your fund balances using those funds at the same time while you are supplementing. And this will help build your reserves, and I believe it will help Grand Island live to fight another day. So it'll stop the diminishment of these reserves over time. That's the plan. On the next page, I've actually tried to summarize how the reserves come out using the two scenarios as a summary. So if you'll notice, just look at twenty twenty-six in each one. You'll see the bottom plan, my scenario two, usually supplement of the federal funds, but actually puts you in better shape. So we've got some things to do and some things not to do, some things to continue doing and some things not to do, continue doing. So I think you'll be in better shape using this. So here's my recommendations in a nutshell. Page twelve. We've got to track expenses. Here's what I'm going to say. This is going to be a little tough sometimes, I think, but you have to realize this. If we don't need to spend it, don't. Okay? It's nice to make everybody happy, but we can't, we can't, if it isn't budgeted, don't buy it. If it isn't emergency, don't have it. If it isn't really required, don't do it. Right now, you've got a whole bunch of things that have become part of the Grand Island culture that would be considered required to continue. But if you start something new, you may have to practice selective abandonment and get rid of something. So the idea is, we've got to tighten up some of these expenses. So you've got to watch that carryover, A. B, please keep in mind that when you are actually planning your budget with Ruby and Dr. Graham, what's going to actually happen here is, you're going to be planning your budgets probably starting next month. You're going to pass the budget in May that won't take effect until the following July, that has the last of the following June thirtieth, and still bring carryover money, and you've got to do it five years in a row. It can be done. Okay, we've got to maintain adequate cash flow. So far, so good. So we've got to make sure we're doing that. And then we've got to look at cost reductions. In other words, one of the things I said, remember I mentioned about the buses? I think we ought to examine the buses, see if we can save you a couple bucks on buses. All right, get you more aid and have the bus cost less. But if you have to cut things, or you have to trim things, or you have to make tough decisions, always, I'm an educator. I didn't know how your finance happened, but I'm an educator. We've got to do it far away from the kids. I think today's board meeting was a perfect example of how important these kids are to this community, how important these kids are. So you've got to be careful. But you've also got to take a look at attrition and breakage. So let me give you an example. Well, if Rick was working for you, and Rick decides to retire, quit, or whatever he does, moves out of town. In the old days, you would probably say, well, who are going to get to replace Rick? My suggestion to you now is, do we need to replace Rick? Would be the question I would ask. Now, it might be you don't need to replace Rick, or maybe you need to replace Rick, but not the same way as Rick's working now. Or maybe you don't need a Rick anymore, but you need an Ed over here so you can reallocate the resources. So I think we're going to start thinking about attrition and breakage to try and save some money. I think what we've got to do is get a long-range financial plan on those buses. I really would like to work the schedule out with that. But I've got to tell you, you are looking, every school district in the state of New York is looking at a fiscal cliff in the year twenty twenty-four. Every district. So you're not alone. Number two, reevaluating reserve and fund balances for sustainability and sustainability. I think you've got to build a TRS reserve. That pension system is going up. So one of the first places I would put some money in reserve would be there, in capital. Got to build that ERS because those reserves are starting to cost, or those pensions are starting to cost a good chunk of change because of exactly the salary increases. C, you've got to look at a capital reserve. I think you're going to be looking at a capital project probably every couple of years if you're smart this way. There's no reason that you have to do fifty million dollar projects. I have districts that are doing ninety million dollar projects because they waited so long to do everything. So I think we can come up with plans that you can do it more frequently, but they don't have to be as large, and we can actually keep the cash flow fairly fine. I think we'd have to take a look at capital reserves for other things, maybe vehicles, equipment, technology, or something like this in the future if we have the funds for it. I think the longevity of the federal grants is going to be problematic for you and every other school district in the state of New York. I'm trying to work with our clients now to use them very prudently, but I've got to tell you, as I gain new clients, I find out some errors have been made, and they're way off on a tangent someplace, and it's going to cost them cash. So we've got to be careful. But there will be federal funding cliffs in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, no matter what happens. No matter what you do, those cliffs will be there because those grants will be gone. And I would use the supplement and supplant method with the grants. Next, your state aid. Remember, your foundation aid is going to increase slightly, but then ebb out, basically. It's going to kind of flatten right out to a very low number, and I think so that's got to be taken into consideration. I think we have to take a look at the pros and cons of a building project using the new debt service. debt service fund ones. I think we've come up with a plan that you can actually do it and it will work. It will flatten out your debt service and your aid, so I think we can eliminate that problem. But you're not gonna have a huge capital project unless you want a tax impact, at least on the preliminary one we've been talking about. And then you've gotta monitor the tax cap. The tax cap is actually there for a purpose. Every time you pass a resolution, whether it's your budget, capital project, by bus, no matter what you do, the words "and levy the tax" thereto is in the resolution. What you've been doing is using your treasury and not collect the tax. That cannot go on forever because you're gonna run out of the money. So I think we have a plan to actually stop the flow of those reserves. Are there any questions? Make an answer if you can, board.
Yeah, I asked that question. So yeah, it certainly did bump the, you know, our, our service. Where do we get the funding for our service?
I think the only way you gotta, the only thing you can do right now at this point is, two ways. If, if we're tax-avoidant, then what we have to do is we have to do more supplanting with the federal money. That's it. That's the only one we can do.
It's got to be something, it's something that was.
Yeah, well, yeah, even if you stop the growth, it would be a big help. Sure, absolutely.
And that's, that's the magic part, you know?
Right.
Is we need a budget that is going to, um, realize that if you want to grow reserves and not use reserves, or, or, and then we can't increase revenues. So we have to somehow find savings.
You gotta find savings. Now, remember, savings occur in a couple of ways. Well, there's through the supplanting with the federal funds, that would be one. But the other one is stopping the rate of increase. Okay? And you know, you got an inflation rate trend now, so it's a big, good chance to take a look at some things. But remember, the idea is growing reserves is not just so you have a whole bunch of reserves and you never spend. The idea is the plan. So the technically speaking, let's just say you wanted to buy an eighty thousand dollar plow for the snowplow or something, you had to put in a budget and raise taxes for it, you would've already saved for it over time. So you would have equipment replacements. Make sense?
Reduce self-cost. Right, what do you?
I can't hear.
Reduce self-cost.
Reduce all costs.
Okay, well, yeah, exactly. But that's the, you're, you're right, though. Uh, this has the discussions you will, you'll continue to have, absolutely. But remember, when you trim your budget, if you trim fund balance, you're gonna trim the reserve. So it's gotta be something rid. Right? Any other questions or comments?
I just wanna mention one thing. You heard him mention multiple times about the debt service and the planned use of that. That was planned and voted on in the capital project that's finishing up. Um, so it's, it's not something that was unknown. Uh, I think all the implications of it, uh, were not forthcoming and we're realizing things and, uh, Rick is helping us with what is currently happening and how it moves forward in the future, but it was planned and he's mentioned it, but I just wanted to make sure you guys.
That is correct. She's correct. Yeah, the key thing, I think, the use of monies like that is, is simply to, uh, use the monies over the same period of time as the amortization schedule for the project, rather than advancing. Any other questions? Okay, everybody take out a sheet of paper, number one to ten, we'll start with the test. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all of you so far, and I really look forward to a bright future with all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sims. And feel free to head back, I know you have a lot to do.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Drive safely.
The goal is for you to, yeah.
Here, we do not have anyone for the public comment session, so we will, for the agenda items only, we will move ahead to curriculum instruction with, uh, Mr. Moria.
So under curriculum A, um, it is, uh, we are requesting, our English department has put in two new electives for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Those electives are blog writing, um, and to teach or not to teach is Shakespeare's still relevant today, which is more of a modern day view on the relevance of Shakespeare in today's society. So these items are for your review, or if you decide to take action tonight, you may choose to do so.
Yeah, um, it looks like we're looking for a motion to approve item A. Do I have a motion for A, please? It says, uh, motion to approve.
To approve the two electives.
Yeah. And the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carries seven zero.
And then B is just for your information, it's our, I've decided to establish a monthly curriculum and instruction and professional development report, so that is our report for November.
Thank you. That brings us to personnel instructional. If I could have a motion to approve P I one through P I four, please?
I'll motion.
And the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carries seven zero.
Yes.
And so, yes.
One.
Thank you. I did not see that. Personnel non-instructional, if I could have a motion to approve P N I one through P N I three, please? And the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carries six zero. Moving on to finance with Dr. Harris.
The two items on here for approval tonight is obsolete equipment. Um, the obsolete equipment is coming from the athletics department, David Schrader. Uh, and then in reference to budget transfers over fifteen thousand, that goes to the capital project. Um, you will probably see one more in reference to the capital project, we have some things we're finishing up now, but that is all the building down to be submitted by the post reports. So it's just movement into the correct account.
If I could have a motion to approve A and B, please?
I'll motion.
And the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carries seven zero.
The other, A and B are just A. So the A and B. A and B. Um, item C is the check warrants for the month of November. Uh, and you already listened to, uh, my lovely presentation there. Um, and then you also have the treasurer's report, uh, on here for your information, and the facility usage schedule of these. Um, we had a committee, um, and I think we had two meetings, maybe three, just to kinda go through where we currently were and where we would like to be in reference to a fee structure. Uh, we did reach out to multiple districts, all of that information is in there. So it's just informational right now for you to review, I'm not gonna deep dive into it, but, um, it will be on the next board meeting for the, for the discussion and then, um, direction or action.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So for the new information, we, uh, all the group, was the old information, rap rate or was?
So the old information was an hourly rate. I would also say, though, for the old information, the only people that seem to, or groups that seemed to be charged was, uh, like dance in the auditorium and the field usage. So we had these rates there for a while, um, but they weren't being charged. So that includes calf, gyms, um, all those different areas. So what we did was, we tried to take into consideration, um, Grand Island residents, right, taxpayers, uh, even that in consideration, and this being something that we're now we introduce to them as, hey, this is the fee or requirement for the, for the utilization, um, as well as doing an upcharge for the all of Grand Island. And there's, the committee is still talking about certain assets, right? Because the question is, what's being for Grand Island, what's not? How do you differentiate between that? So there's more pieces to still be worked through, but, um, the committee felt comfortable with these numbers in this aspect and may continue to build on, um, the background.
Looking at the first slide of this, we're not going to raise the block on child facilities. Our rate went from forty-five to seventy-five dollars an hour, we're not going from ten dollars to sixty-five dollars an hour. So our hourly rate is around. So I, I would assume.
Yes, it's, the hourly rate has dropped, we're actually going to charge the hourly rate. So now, right now, there's a rate, but nobody's paying the rate. So the revenue being received is zero. So to say to someone, you want to use this starting, let's say, January first, and it's fifty-five dollars or seventy-five dollars or forty-five and sixty, um, just seemed like it was going to be a bit of a uproar. I, and, and that's why the continuing discussion, like just providing the board with the information and, um, getting some thoughts from that, I, I can always bring it back to the committee.
So the old information was a flat rate, not a profit? They weren't paying forty-five dollars an hour? Nonprofit?
I'll confirm. I, I feel it was hourly. I have to look at the actual website online, so, hold on one second.
No, that's all right. Just moving ahead, I gave you, you know, our rate went from forty-five to seventy-five dollars an hour, then ten to sixty-five, so we dropped. The next slide is dropped. Over what? The new information.
Yes.
So we have a record event of, uh, of the money collected for rentals?
Yes.
Over there?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to know the groups as well?
Uh, I think it's easy.
Huh?
If it's easy, okay.
Okay.
I wanna just make hours on that.
That's all we have.
Okay. Moving on to special education, it looks like, uh, we need a motion for A and B. Was there anything to ask, Cheryl?
Um, just the two program recommendations for, um, letter A and letter B for CPSC and CSC, I'm here, please.
All right. Picking out a motion for services A and B, please?
I'll motion.
And the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carries seven zero. That brings us to the superintendent's report with Dr. Graham.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your interest in our district and for people that are here. Uh, we appreciate you and thank you for, uh, being here to learn more about our district. Uh, for this report, I will skip many of the slides for the interest of time. Uh, so I'm gonna jump ahead to the test of state. And I just wanna make sure that the community knows that our Board of Education adopted a resolution at the November eighth, uh, meeting to support and encourage our local health department to move forward with the test of state strategy. As you already know, we are the only school district in Erie County selected to participate in this pilot program. And of course, it's in partnership with Erie County Department of Health. As everybody knows, the test of state strategy is designed to significantly reduce the number of students who are excluded from school due to being identified as a close contact to someone who was positive at school. The test of state program would allow for a student identified as a close contact to be tested daily before school. If the student is negative, the student would be allowed to attend school for that day. So this, uh, next page, uh, all of board members have a copy at your seat, uh, indicates, uh, the first week, uh, from December sixth to December thirteenth. As you can see, the first week from the sixth to the tenth, we did not have any positive cases and all of the tests, uh, were negative. And then today, we did have a positive case. So that's listed here in the chart. Fifteen total tested, fourteen negative, and one positive. So overall, uh, over the six days, we've had one hundred and seventeen tests, one hundred and sixteen of them were negative, and we had, uh, one positive case. Does the board have any questions about that information?
So, okay, so first day, twenty-three, I'm assuming it's the same. So you take it?
So for December sixth? Yes. So we had twenty-three students across the entire district tested.
So with the variation of numbers, just they just decided not to come in?
Sure. So some students had, uh, the quarantine ended for some of those days, so the numbers do change. And it's also important to know that some, even though the numbers have gone down, some new students are being tested, uh, even though some have fallen off of their quarantine.
Okay, and this was an, another option for parents, so this was important to know that it's optional to participate in the program. Students could also stay home, you know, parents could choose whether their child stayed home or be quarantined.
Yes.
During this time period as well.
Yes, so it's totally optional, it's opt-in. Some parents, you know, I, we've gotten, uh, really good feedback from the parents I'm looking at, or principals, uh, the parents who have had their children participate have been thrilled to have this opportunity. But some parents may continue to stay, uh, have their children stay in quarantine, and some families are also considering, uh, to be vaccinated. So there's three options with the test of state.
And this is for the school day, this doesn't involve, I know when I was with the legislative meeting, the last legislative meeting, and advocating for this test of state, they'd said that it would not include the after-school activities, so the only way to be able to participate now still is if a child was vaccinated. Correct?
Sure. So Rick, this pilot program does not, it's only for the school day. Uh, so, uh, if, if a child is, uh, participating in test of state, but they also are in a sport or an extracurricular activity, it's really, it ends up becoming a modified quarantine for that family. So they're able to come to school if they're negative, but they still go home and continue their quarantine, uh, outside of school.
Is there, how, is there a really old patching thing? I mean, maybe if I read that the one, Monroe, that's, someone else's, they have to say is not yet, because?
I can't, I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
So is there any old patching? It depends. Sports, the answer, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, this is just a pilot program for Erie County. Monroe, if, all the suburban districts in Monroe County are participating in test of state without pilot. So their department of health decided to move forward, they accessed over seven hundred and fifty thousand tests, and they're for all of the suburban districts in Monroe County. The only district not participating is the Rochester City Schools. To your question, I will double-check to see if those students are allowed to do extracurricular activities during their test of state. I'm not sure what Monroe was doing, so I'll have to read up on that and get that information for you. But to this, to this end, if Erie County moves forward, we will of course become, you know, be, become activating our super test to advocate for, uh, you know, the extracurricular and, and sport activities to be included in test of state, but right now, it's not. Any other questions about that? And so the last, uh, slide I do wanna share with you is, I have spoken to the superintendent of the Rush County Edith School District. They are a week ahead of us in Monroe County, so, um, his district, uh, they conducted five hundred tests, and there were eleven positive cases, uh, that, that they have identified. So again, you know, we've talked a lot about the fact that, um, we believe that ninety-eight percent of the students who are part of, uh, a quarantine end up being healthy during that time. So right now, I think, we hope that Erie County will look at the data from Grand Island, but also consider the data in Monroe County when they move forward to make a decision if this should grow and continue outside of a pilot. Any questions about that? Okay. So the rest of the slides are there for your, you know, consumption. You can see that, you know, I've been including a lot of photographs of our students engaged in various activities. There are some slides here about test to stay and other activities throughout our district over the last time we were together at the board meeting. But just in the interest of time, I'll review that, I know it's online, this, this, this happened. Any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the Board of Education report, the safe plan is attached and we also have a liaison report for the high school PTA, did you want to comment on that Jake?
No, just there for your information.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the public comments session, general items not included on this agenda. We do have several people signed up for this. At this time, the public comments are invited from those individuals who desire to address the Board of Education on any topic which is on agenda. Residents who have previously, I'm sorry, who said is, yes, for general items. Residents who have previously signed up will be recognized by a five-minute one speaking. Please identify yourself first, speak clearly and loudly enough for everyone in the room to hear you. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes, to appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a gross concern, and if necessary or desired, you may supplement your verbal presentation with reports. Personal comments toward a member of the community, staff, or Board of Education member will not be considered appropriate. At this time, I'd like to invite Jim Mulheen from, Mulheazy, from what he's gone, okay. Justin Chol.
Well, this is about garbage, because that, just seeing that board, or those, those numbers that you guys are dealing with with our budget, I mean, you got, you got your hands full, big time. And obviously, you're going to need that five million dollars a year that our kids are going to try to earn by having to wear a mask and having to do this quarantine. It's funny, like, like, you, you, the numbers that Henrietta shows and that we show, it doesn't show that there should be more test to stay, it shows that quarantine is ridiculous. It's ignorant. Eleven positive kids out of five hundred kids, that, just let them go. Like, I mean, that's, that's, what is it, one percent, one and a half percent? Quarantine is, it's ridiculous, it's unfair, and it's been like that. The numbers have, I think the numbers have been like that for, right, one percent, two percent of all. We quarantined four hundred and ninety-eight kids as of the last meeting or something, and there was two percent of them maybe that tested positive. We're worried about two percent of kids? All these kids are missing extracurriculars now, missing ten days of school with their friends for a two percent chance that they have COVID and that even at their age group, they're not even, they're not even, they're hardly affected. You guys are, this is unbelievable, what this board does, and it's, it's not the board, it's the whole idea of everything. Like, a quick, all right, one quick thing. Public health law, section sixteen, Governor Cuomo's favorite, strong-armed, public health law, states within fifteen days of notice given, that the opportunity to be heard and to present any proof that such a condition or activity does not constitute a danger to the health of the people will be given. I have no idea what the penalties are for a district eliminating mask mandates and quarantine mandates, except for losing five million dollars in funding, of course, which obviously is extremely important to our district because it seems like we're out of money or running out of money, so. But during that fifteen days, and you're allowed to speak, let's say you say, our, our district says, there's no, we're not going to do masks anymore, this is ridiculous, quarantine shows that it's useless, our kids, you know, they might be sick, they're not, they're not getting hospitalized, this is an emergency on Grand Island, we're not going to put our kids through this anymore. It doesn't make any sense anyway.
Thirty seconds.
And they, when you're given that opportunity to demonstrate that optional masking is not a danger, you could simply present current COVID information from Broward County School Districts in Florida, where masks haven't been mandatory since November twentieth. The figures prove beyond a doubt that optional masking poses less danger than masking and is actually safer than masking. Broward County School District is the sixth largest school district in the country with a two hundred and fifty-six thousand student population, the same size as the city of Buffalo. GI has twenty-eight hundred students approximately. Can we please just, a couple seconds, if you won't, we go out of law, it's all garbage, just...
Sorry, we have to keep the time.
Since November twentieth, Broward County School District has averaged less than ten cases a day. Two hundred and fifty-six thousand kids, ten cases a day, the size of Buffalo, ten kids a day.
Sir, time's up.
But nobody wants to hear what the case is saying.
It, it, it's ten cases a day for two hundred and fifty-six thousand people. They're doing something right that we're doing wrong.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Who are two hundred and fifty-six thousand kids?
You're, uh, Karen Watts, definitely, is, is, I'm looking here.
I just wanted to talk about, two boarding meetings ago, you had brought in two administrators from Bosie's to explain your job and the board's role. Thank you for the clarification, but I do see it a little bit, I see it a little bit different. As a nurse, my job is also to follow orders as well. I'm to act in accordance with the doctor's direction. Of course, when doctors place an order, there's a check system in place for safety. First, the doctor reviews his order, pharmacy verifies it, and the third check is the nurse. Yet if the order that is implemented negatively affects the patient, do you know who's most responsible out of those three? It would be the nurse, because I'm the one who's carrying out the order. And I am the last line of defense for the patient. It's not only my job to follow orders, but to question them if they seem appropriate. Dr. Graham, you and the board are the last line of defense for our students. It may be your job to implement orders, but it's equally important to question those orders. Right now, everything is very fluid with things changing daily, and it would be inappropriate not to question things. An example is how recently two districts responded differently to mask breaks that came into question. One district wanted more clarification but was willing to follow guidelines, while another stated that because they did not see mask breaks listed in the new guidelines, they would continue the humane act of allowing mask breaks for students. Orders were questioned and decisions were made in the best interest of students. So sometimes you can make decisions that go against certain guidelines. Nurses are also the first line of defense, because when we see a patient suffering physically, mentally, or emotionally, it's my job to advocate for the patient and report to the doctor what they are experiencing. You are also the first line of defense for the students to report adverse effects, struggles they are facing, and needs that they have. Much like it is best for the nurse to report the problems to the doctor, if, because it's a credible source, it's best for sometimes the school districts to come and be able to present the problems to the state on what the kids are experiencing. This is why I feel it's so necessary for schools to take the initiative in helping students with mental health. Although it's important to take steps, I'm keeping students in school. Canceling assemblies on drug and alcohol education seems counterproductive when the overdose rate from New York has increased thirty-eight percent in the last year. It's not thirty-eight percent, it's increased thirty-eight percent in the last year. I've currently been working with administrators, teachers, and social workers in my district in creating a partnership with a local mental health advocacy organization where they will initiate an eight-week mental health program, pushing into the classrooms, no assembly is required, beginning with a pre-survey needs assessment, then tailoring the program to the students and what needs they have. Then they're finished with a post-assessment, where they offer the students more services, so they can offer counseling, mentorship, and peer support programs. I believe early detection and intervention is key, because hospitals are becoming overwhelmed with mental health needs. They're either diverting patients or sending them away, and students have nowhere to turn. And then they will fall back on the schools, so it will become the school's responsibility. So planning ahead is crucial, because what we witnessed in Michigan recently is going to become all too familiar, as we know in Florida, COVID, and Pennsylvania, and today, this week. Time's up. Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer America.
Hi, Jennifer America. U.S. Surgeon General Dr. Vivek Murphy said young people in America are experiencing alarming and widespread mental health crisis, and that systematic change is needed in order to tackle the issue. He added, "It would be a tragedy if we back, beat back one public health crisis only to allow another one to grow in its place." But are we even beating COVID? Grand Island is one of the highest vaccinated areas in Erie County, yet we experienced one of the highest confirmed cases in Erie County recently. Our children are still getting COVID, no matter masks or not masks. Are the potential risks of these masks worth it? Chances are the majority of children, if not all, in our school have had COVID, regardless if it was confirmed or not. Instead of our state staffing hospitals, providing them resources, and utilizing effective treatment, they're trying to control something that they can have no control over, because COVID isn't going away. Our children are silently and loudly crying for help. Teen suicide attempts among girls have increased fifty percent from two thousand and nineteen. There's been several school threats throughout Western New York lately. The test to stay program is shameful. While I appreciate that you want our children in school, the discrimination and the lack of science behind the rules of this pilot program is just absurd. When you and the state claim that your policies are strictly based on science, then tell us, how is it okay that a student who has been tested negative daily can attend class but not attend their sports or activities? That is not science, that is punishment and discrimination based on their medical background. When you introduce discrimination in your school walls, you create bullying and leads to hostile environment. There's no justification to school excluding children who have been proven to be healthy from extracurricular activities, because we know that activities are equally essential to our children's development and well-being. And again, we know vaccinated students and staff are getting COVID too. I demand you implement policies that are consistent, equitable, fair, and appropriate to all students based, because no discrimination should be tolerated. I also urge you to request the state to deny any COVID vaccine requirements for our children to attend school. If the path of these COVID mandates continues, you will continue to lose students. Because us parents are done with this, these mandates on our kids that are causing so many issues. Enough is enough. Less students means less state aid.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nicole Vakanti.
Nicole Vakanti, Superintendent and board members, did you know that each COVID test swab, whether rapid or PCR, is dipped in a hazardous substance called ethylene oxide? This is a colorless gas or liquid used to make other chemicals and used as sterilant. It is listed on the right-to-know hazardous substance list because it is cited by OSHA as a carcinogen, mutagen, and teratogen in humans. OSHA states that all contact should be reduced to the lowest possible level, and when any skin contact occurs, one is considered to be overexposed. By our students getting tested through both nasal passages on a consecutive basis with the PCR test swab for the virus, that would be considered inhalation and skin contact. The first aid treatment that OSHA lists for this type of contact is immediately remove the individual from exposure, immediately wash the contaminated skin with large amounts of water and soap, remove such persons from exposure, and seek medical attention immediately. Acute contact or exposure to ethylene oxide, which includes this consecutive test to stay option, can severely irritate and burn the skin, irritate the nasal passages and throat, cause frostbite, headaches, nausea, vomiting, dizziness, itching, a skin allergy, along with twitching and seizures. Higher repeated exposure, which is consecutive testing, including the test to stay option, may damage the nervous system, can irritate the lungs, and higher longer exposure can cause a bulk of fluid in the lungs, causing pulmonary edema, which is a medical emergency. I ask you, board members and superintendent, have you made the students and parents aware of this known carcinogen on the swab that is being inserted into their nostrils? Are you going to provide each parent of the child, who has not been inoculated with the COVID-19 shot and who is required to get daily testing during the test to stay option, with the ingredient insert that comes in the package of the PCR swab, or with the New York State Department of Health hazard sheet and its effects? Any said person has a right to know about the hazards that they are being exposed to under the New York State Right to Know Law, the Federal Occupational and Safety and Health Administration, and the Hazard Communication Standard. OSHA requires anyone who would be exposed to this carcinogen be provided with a copy of the OSHA ethylene oxide standard. Again, are you providing this to parents and students now that the test to stay option has been implemented? As we know, the test pilot program through the district, with a partnership through the unreasonable Erie County Department of Health, is only being utilized for any student identified as a close contact who has not been inoculated with the COVID-19 shot.
Thirty seconds.
Close contact, which is school exposure, including the bus, is considered the greater than fifteen minutes with less than three feet from one another. As we see and hear that the efficacy of the Moderna-Pfizer J&amp;J has dwindled immensely, hence the booster, why isn't the test to stay option being offered or mandated to such students who were in close contact and have been inoculated? Superintendent and board members, how can this not cause great concern to you? Those students who have received a full dose of the COVID shot, who will still have full capability, possibly with even a higher rate, of spreading the virus to students that have or haven't received the COVID-19 shot, still attend school on a daily basis and have no testing or quarantine mandates imposed on them? As I, I as a nurse, encourage you to take a step back and reevaluate this process that you are imposing on those who haven't gotten the COVID-19 shot. It is pure discrimination, you know it, the Erie County Department of Health knows it, and we all know it. And we know that you are getting money for our children, and you will see a mass exodus of children once the shot mandate comes down.
Joni Salano from Falls Link in Grand Island. I have a question first, I've never, ever spoken in front of anybody before, so this is very new for me. Is this all being recorded? So do you all listen to this after? Because I've noticed none of you have taken any notes about the... Good, because there's a lot of really good things that have been said, especially about the ethylene, that dog poison, it's going up their noses. So I'm following what Nicole said, and I'm talking about the test to stay option. And I, I just, I'm appalled that, I mean, I worked in medicine for forty-six years and did research on breast cancer patients and cardiology, cardiology patients, heart attack patients. No vaccine, no medicine, nothing that we ever gave a breast cancer patient or a heart patient was ever under research for less than five to ten years. And you want to put this other stuff in our children that hasn't even been under research for two years? Not even approved by the FDA. I'm, I'm just appalled that you're all taking this stance. But, and I've never thought about homeschooling my own children. I'm sixty-seven, I have eight grandchildren. I'm going to stay home and homeschool them if some of this doesn't change. Tell them right now, man, that's like Nicole said. But anyway. I ask in all seriousness, why, if you're doing this pilot program, why would it not include the children getting extracurricular activities? That doesn't make any sense at all. You've all been to school, you've heard about the man's law of hierarchy, hierarchy of needs. The children need these for survival, they need to be with their friends, they need to get extracurricular things. My granddaughter is eleven years old, she has been out of school three different times for ten days because of being in contact, never get it once. And she's not doing homeschool at all, and I'm very, very upset about that. But discrimination is the unjust or prejudicial treatment of different categories to which they belong or are perceived to belong, especially on the grounds of medical choice. This test to stay pilot is pure discrimination against the uninoculated students. You all know this, and the ECDOH knows it, and there is no denying it. It is full disclosure that when the district accepted funding from the American Rescue Plan, you received at least thirty-seven hundred dollars per student to keep our children muzzled during the school day.
Thirty seconds.
Superintendent, as the evidence shows in your compliance to these tyrannical mandates, our children appear to be just a dollar sign to you and money in your pocket. We take payers' payers salary, and your school board members were voted in by us and work for us. And hundreds of us feel you aren't speaking up on our behalf for our children in the school district. So I ask when this test to stay pilot is over after this month, this month, how much money will be, will you be taking from the state to continue the discrimination against the students and families who choose to not receive the COVID vaccine?
Five seconds.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, how long?
To start with, again, I know you guys are up against a lot of different rules, and I understand that the test-to-stay was in place as a way to at least try to keep the kids in school. I still disagree with it being discriminatory the way it is against those that are vaccinated, those that are not. I want to speak today more about what I've spoken about in the past, and there's now proof of what we're doing to these kids, it's causing mental illness. Their physical health is no longer a problem. We are at an actual emerging youth mental health crisis. There was a surgeon general released a 53-page report, learning that symptoms of depression and anxiety have doubled during the pandemic, with 25% of youth experiencing depressive symptoms and 20% experiencing anxiety. Among teenage girls, suicide attempts are up a shocking 51%. We know the effects of social media and the internet on mental health in developing girls. We force them to continue a lot of their socializing online during the pandemic, and then they're wondering why they're having trouble and issues. The other thing that is happening to a lot of these children is with this test-to-stay, yes, they can go to school, but their after-school activities are not happening the way they used to, and they're not allowed to go into them. There are cases of children committing suicide because of that, because they can't continue to do their after-school activities the way they're used to, because of the adaptations that have been made, because of the masking and the social distancing, is causing them to not participate, because it's not the same. And I just ask you to continue fighting for our children. You are our voice for our kids. And I know that you're trying to get some logic behind this, and I know that you guys are up against a lot of illogical things, but just like what's happening in some of these counties that have turned around and said to our governor, "No more, we're done", this is what we need you guys to continue fighting for us. And I know that the superintendents wrote a letter asking for the proof and when this is going to end. I don't know what their response has been. I would love to know if you've heard something back, but we need you to continue fighting against this illogical push and discrimination to force everyone into a vaccine that someone decided is supposed to help. But if you look at the numbers, everyone I know that's gotten sick in the last month is fully vaccinated. It's not the unvaccinated friends of mine, it's the people that are vaccinated. There is no proof, and we are discriminating. We are teaching our kids discrimination still, even with this test-to-stay. You're not testing the kids that are vaccinated also, and I don't understand why. There is total breakthrough with a lot of this for people, and I just feel that we... This is the time for we, you, as our board, to start to stand up a little bit more for the kids. I am terrified for the mental health of our younger children. My kids are a little bit older, but even what has affected them, their normal socialization in high school has been none. And, you know, they finally got a dance this past year was the first time in two years. So I appreciate the work you've done so far, and please keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to committee of the whole items and information for the roundtable beginning with one.
I got no. Jay?
I'm all set, thank you.
It was just nice to see all the others, the athletes tonight, see them. They know for all their hard work that they had to push them to get through.
Cheers.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, enjoy your family time.
I would just like to wish everyone a very Christmas, and note that there is a legislative survey that I'm sending to the Erie County School Boards. If anyone wants to weigh in on priorities, feel free to complete it, it's in their email. And that brings us to...
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set. Thanks for staying. Thank you, I'll take this.
Yeah, just wanted to say that Jessica Hutchins, Sue Marsden, Jay Grover, and myself, we had a weekly meeting, wellness committee meeting, so it was nice to get back to report out. I also want to say that Camp of Chivalry is our new agency that we will be contracting with, and they are going to be starting in our district one of the Tuesdays in January. So we actually have another agency to help, to better help our children. Very excited to announce that. Happy holidays, everybody.
I have stuff. Just a couple of items. Cheryl said I have two minutes. So just a couple of items. We are at the tail end of our FEMA request, which is for the professional plastics, the large-ticket item areas, and it does look that we will be granted that funding source, so that will be some revenue we receive back that we weren't fully sure about. And as the rules change, if anything else qualifies, we will continue to apply for those things to receive money back. We are also at the tail end of the Sidway Desney Grant. We are doing our submission tomorrow, so I'm hoping in the coming weeks, they'll actually just wire us the money instead of waiting for a check. The Grand Island Library reached out to us in reference to them having a large sum of funds. They cannot access the same type of investment accounts that school districts can, so they are seeing if there is a way to partner with the school district to open a specific investment account for the library to allow their money to grow a little bit better. That is allowable, so school districts do do that, and I'm investigating that a bit more. Anything we can do to give back to the community and really help the library out, I think, is a collaborative and supportive nature of the entire community. So I will have forthcoming information in January about that, as well as January providing a... BOSI's first half of their capital project is completed, so you'll have informational update for that. I will not read through it in the upcoming presentation, but I will provide that, as well as our own update, since our capital project is ending. Happy holidays.
Thank you. And Dr. Graham?
Yes, thank you. You know, for our board and our community, I just want to take a moment to thank our transportation department for their excellent work past Wednesday, as we experienced a bus accident on the 290. Last Wednesday, four of our students who have special education needs, who were being transported back to the island from their off-island school, they were involved in an accident. There was another vehicle that slid on the slippery 290 road conditions. That vehicle was in the right lane, and it hit our bus, and our bus was in the center lane. The car hit our bus on the passenger side, causing the bus to spin and slide into the guardrail. Both impacts were measurable and caused significant damage. Thankfully, our students are safe and uninjured, and we're so grateful to our bus driver, Wendy Truesdale, who really did a remarkable job keeping her students safe. And as soon as the bus came to a stop, she immediately went to assist our staff members and the students. She remained calm, and she was a true leader in this accident. I'd also like to recognize Ruth Soto-Hussain, our bus attendant, and our supplemental health contractor, Pam Masters. Additionally, Dr. Ruby Harris was actually driving on the 290 for an appointment and noticed the bus and stopped to see how she could assist. Our two transportation mechanics, Jesse Popovich and Zachary Elding, reported to the scene along with head bus driver Amy Vierost, the Tonalanda police, the EMT paramedics from that town, and of course, our director of transportation, Teresa Lysade. It was all hands on deck. All of these individuals either were, of course, on hand during the accident or reported there, they were all instrumental in helping move our students off of the bus and onto another bus, so that they could be driven home after the EMT paramedics checked out everybody on the bus. The amount of coordination, parent communication, and attention to detail for safety was outstanding. We really are very proud of our transportation team. I know that it's very late, but let's give them a round of applause. And as Jude said, I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Our students have been actively collecting food items for the Neighbors Foundation, and now this week are collecting toys and gifts for needy Grand Island and Buffalo families. The needy Grand Island families are over 30, approaching 38 families that are in need, and well over 85 students. So we encourage our students to continue their generosity and goodwill throughout this week. Mr. Brooker and our students are doing a good job, and we encourage them to continue that, so that everybody can have a very Merry Christmas and a beautiful holiday, and remain safe and festive for the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next meeting is January 10th at Vernon County Middle School. With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn at 10:25 PM, please.
I'll...
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a nice holiday, everyone.